I couldn't roll it out.
That's a good idea. Welcome. I will call to order the January 4, 2024 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council, Stephen Madcor; Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick; Roll Call, Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you when to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be used in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First item is a public hearing. Item one, or Public Hearing One, Approval of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-009, A Single-Lot Annexation to the Clackamas County Service District. Number one. Hong Nguyen, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here before you, a different person, but hopefully a routine matter of requesting your approval of the proposed annexation of a piece of property in Northern Happy Valley into the Clackamas County Service Water District, number one. As you know, as the Board, you have the authority to approve these type of proposed annexation into service districts that are within this county. The property to be annexed is in an unincorporated portion of Happy Valley at the crossing of Southeast 142nd Avenue and Chargin Street, and it consists of one tax lot with an approved existing family, a single-family housing unit. It's about 1.98 acres with tax assessed values of just over $387,000. If you approve this, it allows for this single-family housing to receive sewer and water drainage service from the district itself. As your county council, we've reviewed the proposed annexation against all applicable state law, comprehensive plan, Metro Code, and all the applicable facility plans, and we found this proposal to be consistent with all those plans. So we do recommend that you approve this proposed annexation.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do Commissioners have any questions or comments right now? I will now open the public hearing, and I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify just on this public hearing annexation? I will take people in the room first. I see no one. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify on this particular public hearing?
If you would like to testify on Boundary Change 2023-009, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will close the public hearing and ask the Board of County Commissioners if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-009.
Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-009, and Martha Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for coming. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is a board discussion item on the selection of the 2024 Board Vice Chair. I will lead this presentation. Per the county code and county policy, at the first business meeting of each calendar year, the Board of Commissioners chooses a vice chair. The vice chair is a position that is rotated among the four county commissioners, who are not the elected chair, and is to serve in the absence of the chair. So when Chair Smith is out of the office, the vice chair would chair the meetings and serve in the function of chair. This role is typically rotated among the four county commissioners. Next in line would be Commissioner West. In addition, the vice chair serves on two standing committees of the county. One is the County Internal Audit Oversight Committee and the County Audit Committee, which is the Financial Audit Committee. So those are the three functions of the vice chair. It is totally your choice who to choose, and so that is my presentation. Open now for a board discussion, and then ultimately a motion to choose a vice chair for the calendar year 2024.
I will open it up to a discussion and then a motion. Commissioner Scholl?
Yeah, well, I, on a few occasions, was able to enjoy being the vice chair. Chair Smith, you were here and healthy in 2023. Everybody on the Board has been vice chair numerous times, for some of us, anyway. So with that, I would like to nominate Commissioner Ben West as vice chair for 2024.
And I will second that nomination, and will bring a lot of positive energy to the position and new ideas, so I'm happy to do so.
Commissioner Scholl has nominated Commissioner West to serve as vice chair for the next year. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. I would also like to say, Commissioner Scholl, I've enjoyed you being vice chair. Have you filled in for me on times I could make it? I was sick a couple of times, and you stepped up and assumed the duties, and the leadership was very good. Serving on the Internal Audit Committee and the other audit committee seems like kind of dry work, but it does give you an insight to what's happening in the county, and it's always a learning experience serving on those. So one of them has public members on it, and the other has just internal, but it's very, very good. Any other discussions? Commissioner West, would you accept the motion if you are voted in?
Yes. Thank you very much, Commissioner Scholl, for your nomination and your second. Commissioner Schrader, you know, this week is my second year as a county commissioner, and it's been a blast, and I am just really thankful that my colleagues have some trust in me to do another role and task for this county, and I would be more than happy to step into that role.
Hearing, no further nominations. The nominations are closed. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, Commissioner West. You are now vice chair.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Elected Officials, Item One, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Finance, Item One, Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Crystal Greens LLC for Clackamas County Campus Landscape Services. Total contract value is $1,708,560 over 3.5 years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Human Resources, Item One, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with CDR Labor Law LLC for Union Contract Negotiations and Grievance Investigations for the Clackamas County Employees' Association and the American Federation of State and County Employees Bargaining Units. Contract value not to exceed $750,000 over three years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item Two, Approval of Amendment Number One to a Contract with Browner Brown of Oregon LLC for Comprehensive Insurance and Risk Management Consulting Services. Amendment value is $180,574 for four years. Contract value is increased to $302,664 for seven years. Funding through Risk Management Claims Fund balance and departmental cost allocations, which includes a small portion of budgeted county general funds. County Administration, Item One, Approval of a Lease with the Clackamas County Historical Society for the Museum of the Oregon Territory. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Change Order with Clackamas Progress Partners LLC for Change Order 14 for security equipment and changes for the replacement county courthouse. Change Order Value is $272,235, funding through the courthouse security funds administered by the presiding judge. No county general funds are involved. Item Number Three, Approval of a Change Order with Clackamas Progress Partners LLC for Change Order 15 for the replacement county courthouse. Change Order Value is $329,027.5, leaving a balance of $193,928.40 in credits. Funding through credits and previous change orders, which includes budgeted county general funds. Health Housing Human Services, Item One, Approval of Amendment Number Twelve, Decreasing Funding from an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Financing of Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment Recovery and Prevention Problem Gambling Services. Amendment rescinds $23,565 for six months. Agreement value is decreased to $20,279,574.35 for two years. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Number Two, Approval of a Behavioral Health Services Delegation Agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for Behavioral Health Services. Agreement value is $1,256,648 for six months. Funding through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of a Federal Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated for Alcohol and Drug Housing Assistance Program Services. Agreement value is $448,633.90 for 18 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Four, Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with Northwest Family Services for Services Provided Through the Children of Incarcerated Parents Program. Agreement value is $202,000 for two years. Funding through county allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds and behavioral health funds. No county general funds are involved. Item Number Five, Approval of Revenue Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care for Clackamas Early Learning Hub Programming. Agreement value is $1,787,264 for two years. Funding through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item Number Six, Approval of a Revenue Grant Agreement from the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care for Healthy Families of Oregon Programming. Agreement value is $1,867,774.92 for one year and eight months. Funding through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item Seven, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with Stoner Electric Incorporated for Installation of Physical Infrastructure Wiring at the New Health Centers Division Behavioral Health Clinic. Total value is $211,273.56. Funding through health centers or fund balance. No county general funds are involved. Item Eight, Approval of Amendments Number Three, Four, and Five to the Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Financing of Public Health Services. Amendment value is a net increase of $482,780. Agreement value is increased to $5,946,052.56. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Nine, Approval of a Revenue Grant Agreement over National Association of County and City Health Officials for the Partnering for Vaccine Equity Project. Total value is $150,000 for 12 months. Funding through the Centers for Disease Control. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, Item One, Approval of Amendment Number One Extending the Duration of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Walk-Bike Clackamas Plan. Amendment has no fiscal impact. Agreement value remains at $222,000. Funding through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $30,000 in matching funds in the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Oregon City to Transfer Jurisdiction of Long Standing Court to the City. Total value $26,700. Funding through the Community Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second that.
Commissioner West has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of Amendment Number One with McClure &amp; Sons Incorporated to Award Additive Bid Alternatives Number One and Two to the Primary Clarifier Rehabilitation Project at the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility. Amendment value is $7,387,672.57, increasing total contract value to $12,812,402.57. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Director Schrader has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Director Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Chair, I did submit some questions yesterday to staff after the discussion we had yesterday on this particular item. Got some of those responses, but not complete, so I'm going to abstain today.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Abstain.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Director Schrader.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still jet-lagged. I apologize. Okay. Great.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0-1. I will now adjourn as Water Environment Services and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes, and comments will be courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication to bcc@clackamas.us, and they will be made part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Anybody wishing to testify can fill out a blue card and place it in the basket. Tony, do we have any blue cards?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
I see no one in the room who wishes to testify today. Is there anyone online who wishes to testify?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Mr. Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes. Mr. Weir, you are muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Bill Weir, can I ask this? Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioner. I want to remind us that the third anniversary of January 14, 2021, is coming up in 10 days. That was the date county administration and the commission bonded to overthrow the will of the voters by strong-arming a newly-elected commissioner to resign. Shame, disdain, projection, and mass hysteria were the weapons to get this done. Early on that day, it became apparent, January 14, by a printer-ready censor motion, that there was to be no due process given the accused. Part of the procedure was a letter submitted to the commission, signed by all 22 of the county department heads, that stated, quote, "In all the power dynamics of the employees here in the county, those of us at the top of that structure have the most responsibility to raise our voice." That arrogant and condescending letter placed themselves first, believing themselves more important than they really are, and emboldened to challenge the voter's will. Power dynamics works to the continuation of the governing system as its own self-serving habitat, dedicated strictly to nourishing its own interests. It will rear its head when it feels threatened. Any newly-elected county Clackamas County Commissioner that goes against accepted protocol could be punished. The same day, the county administrator emotionally spoke on video addressing all county employees. He praised the department, saying he was proud of them. He applauded the commission for doing the right thing. Although the goal failed to get the unwanted commissioner to resign, their effort was truly noble. The refusal by the accused commissioner to resign might appear to be a victory that day for the electors who put him in office, but over the last three years, county administration has grown more powerful than ever. You may ask, why drag this up again? Well, it happened, and it is not resolved. I'd like to give a quote by Alexander Solzhenitsyn, quote, "In keeping silent about evil, in burying it so deep within us that no sign of it appears on the surface, we are implanting it and will rise up a thousandfold in the future." Thank you.
So the Board in 2021 voted to censure Commissioner Scholl. That was what the vote was. Yes, department directors wrote a letter. Yes, I'm the county administrator. I serve at the pleasure of the Board. If you're unhappy with my performance, you can make a decision any day on that. I thank Mr. Weir for his comments, as always.
As a matter of fact, Gary, didn't you recommend to the department heads just to stand down and take no action?
I encourage them not to do so because it would have impacts, as we're hearing about today, but they chose to do that independently.
And to make clear, Commissioner Scholl kept his duties and his salary.
He did, yes.
Even though the Budget Committee tried to do the opposite over my objections.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use this time to share the good work of our county employees here at the county. First, I'd like to recognize our Clackamas County Dog Services Division, which is a division of the Department of Transportation and Development. Our staff member Brenda Sadowski received a nice note for her service, and it was related to a barking dog resolution issue, and a member of the public wrote about Brenda. I'd like to take a moment to thank you, Brenda, for your guidance and assistance with the nuisance dog barking we experienced a while back. Although it went on for several months, once I reached out to the Clackamas County Dog Services Program and sent a letter to the dog owners, everything settled down. There's no more barking, droning on for many hours of many days. I very much appreciate the county dog services program, and I appreciate all of you and your colleagues, all that you and your colleagues do on behalf of county residents, people like me, and people who own dogs. Thank you very much. So thank you, Brenda, for your service, and yes, our county has a dog services division that will help with nuisance issues if there's a barking dog, so please contact our dog services. Next, our county tourism program, which is called Mount Hood, Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. A nice note of recognition from a staff member of the city of Malala. Our tourism folks work with all cities and agencies within the county to promote tourism. The staff member from Malala wrote, "I just wanted to let you all know how grateful we are at the city of Malala for the continued support and partnership of the county's tourism program. Yesterday's meeting and the data to follow are invaluable to Malala as we evolve our tourism market and strategize to take advantage of the economic opportunities that come with it. We would not be able to advance the way we have and continue the way we hope without the dedicated team of professionals at Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. Thank you for a great meeting and an even better partnership." So thank you to our staff of our tourism department, Erin Leeserman, Ithaca Jansen, Casey Knopick, Annie Austin, and Jim Austin, who are referred to in this letter. Great work. That is my update for today, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary, now we are at Commissioner Communication. Going off my list, Commissioner Scholl, you're up first.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County, and Happy New Year. I would like to call all residents of Clackamas County to action in 2024. The most important element of good government is you. Whether you're a teenager or a centenarian, your voice, amplified by the voices of your family, your neighbors, your business, and your organizations, are what promote real change in government. And I encourage every resident of Clackamas County to take up an issue that you are passionate about and press your opinion to shape your community. In February, the state legislature will convene for a short term, a short session. Oregon legislators have been looking into topics like housing, tolling, crime, Measure 110, even to include looking at involuntary commitment for drug addiction and homelessness. And your elected representatives need to hear from you. Your state senators need to hear from you. Your senators and representatives to the U.S. Congress need to hear your opinion. I also want to talk to you a little bit about transportation and housing, and I'd like to remind you all that back in 2020, then-Governor Kate Brown enacted Executive Order 20-04, which directed all state agencies to take action within their authority to reduce greenhouse emissions. Now, that sounds like a fine idea, but the Department of Land Conservation and Development got right on it and launched the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking. And my concern here is that the push to further reduce the vehicle miles traveled, again, might sound like a good thing, but it's very difficult to implement in our county. Our county is 1.1 million acres. We have the largest rural population, and all of them, just about down to the last family, rely on cars and trucks to get from their rural communities into work every morning. So I would ask everybody to just be aware of some of these policies that are going on that might affect your life in a way that you don't want to see. Again, our transportation needs in Clackamas County are very different from some of our urban areas in the state, and we need to have consideration from the state legislature to be concerned about our transportation in this county. And again, your voice makes a great deal of difference. Please be involved in government in 2024. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, do the best I can with a little bit of a cough I've been dealing with for the last couple of weeks, so Happy New Year, everyone. I'm going to talk about, not just today, but in the future meetings, at this opportunity to talk about some of the challenges I've learned, and I think at the last meeting in December, I kind of talked about an unnamed elected official, also a staff person, who had served a number of roles and had been around for a long time. Point being is that their experience working in our systems, whether this government or other governments locally, has been an eye-opener for me in my 25th year, and I'm approaching my 14th year, in my 14th year as a county commissioner. But it's not about, it's more about the learned lessons and the wisdom that... But it's not about, it's more about the learned lessons and the wisdom that's gained from that, that as I find that more and more elected officials come and go, and through attrition, there's very few people that have actually stood around for a long period of time. So, this week, I'm not going to name anyone, I didn't name anyone last month, and I'm not going to name anyone going forward, but, you know, this week, following a legislator who has been around for a long time and learned from that legislator's wisdom about how decisions are made and how our system works, and so I'm not focusing on any one form of government other than to talk about governance, and there's many facets of governance. Right now, Portland is changing its structure from five elected officials to 12, and they're going through a massive design change in their governance of the city of Portland. So, they've been in the spotlight. Mollum County has been in the spotlight. They're a very similar government to Clackamas County with five governing county commissioners, and of course, the outcry of issues around drugs and housing and ambulance services and so forth has really drawn a lot of spotlights into how decisions are made. And part of the governance I really want to speak to today particularly is really about the information that we have as elected officials and how we form our decisions on behalf of the citizens we serve for near-term, long-term, and so forth. And I spoke a little bit last week, or last month at the last meeting about metrics and our strategic plan, and we coined that as managing for results, but in particular, that is the information in which helps guide, make sure that we are guiding ourselves towards the results and be able to problem-solve accordingly. And as the spotlight moves around in different forms of government, whether it is decisions made at the state level on housing, or whether it's a state decision made around drugs, or Measure 110, or tolling, or whatever it may be, there is a lot of misinformation out there, and you can call it misinformation, you can call it mythology, you can call it rhetoric, but at the end of the day, those decisions have to be made, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, and I'm not the only one who has that, that we ought to have the metrics, the real metrics to say, we made this decision, here's why and how we made the decision, here are the numbers we're going to monitor to make sure we're going to follow this. That, to me, that's pretty fundamental. In my first year being elected, in elected capacity, over 20 some-odd years ago, that, I think that is really the key here, that I think gets lost. And as big as the county is, for example, whether it's this county or other counties or the state, there's a lot of information out there, and to, I won't say share the burden, but to spread the amount of work and the effort and the staff support for that area focus, let's call it area focus, is important. That's one way of doing it. One way of doing it is to hire all the people to make that happen and make sure that that is the advice or the staff recommendation for whatever that decision may be, whatever governing body that may be. But the end of the day, the metrics are what should be held to and very well-designed, and have the oversight and involvement of the elected officials to make sure that those metrics are real, that they work, and they're always calibrated. And I have found in my 25 years of experience, when we've seen debacles or things that didn't go so well, and also, not to say that, there's also things that went very, very well, right? So, I would say it really boils down to our ability as elected officials to monitor, to have the plans and the metrics in place, and I really want to draw attention to how some of the structures that we currently have. And today, I want to talk a little bit about the state structure when it comes to decision-making, and what I'm going to talk about in particular today is transportation. On the transportation side, it is, we just saw an op-ed from one of our state legislators, a nice article. I would say I probably agreed with most of the piece, other than one reference to that the action needed to be taken to remedy a particular thing on this tolling ought to be done by the Oregon Transportation Commission. And the Oregon Transportation Commission is a five-person-appointed board by the governor, the governor appoints that. And I, in my years, I have watched the governor override the Oregon Transportation Commission on certain decisions and say, you know, and the chair of the Oregon Transportation would say in kind, say, "We work at the pleasure of the governor." So, they're really not the decision-making body, for example. Yet, this particular legislator assumed that the Oregon Transportation Commission is the decision-maker, and they will have, and they have been properly identified as the rate-setting or rate-approval body for tolling, but they are not the decision-makers. And the past and present Oregon Transportation Commission have said, you know, tolling was legislatively-directed. We were legislative-directed to impose tolling. So, voila, here we are with this misunderstanding of how, even from within, and asking and speaking to legislators, whether they're in the region or outside the region, not having any idea about the technicalities, the challenges, the lay of the land, and why it's a really poor idea along the seven-mile stretch or the 14-mile stretch of I-205, and why it might be more feasible in areas where there's a lot of transit. I won't get totally into the weeds, all to say that some of these folks did not vote. They weren't in office to vote for this particular tolling measure, but they don't, HB 2017 in particular, or HB 3055, they weren't around at the time. Some of them were, but nonetheless, it has been very apparent to me that most of them do not understand the decision that they made and the ramifications thereof. And yet, last year, and I'll say it again, and over and over and over, I was really anticipating that the Joint Transportation Committee would have hearings on this particular topic and have access. We, the public, Oregon, known for its open public meetings law, open for transparency in government, would have hearings so we could speak to those decision-makers. I really think that the decision-making structure of the state on transportation is broken. I've tried to explain it to people. They think that, oh, county commissioners decide on interstates. No, they don't. Or city officials decide on, or the JPAC members decide on transportation projects. No, we don't. As a matter of fact, that's all driven by the state, and by the way, you can make a decision, but where does the money come from? And the money comes from the state, and the state makes the call. And sometimes, the intervener in that, between the state and federal funding or funding on these projects, is actually Metro. And Metro can say, up or down, no, we're not going to fund this, even though it might not be their money, but they have a say as a federal-designated metropolitan planning organizations, which is a federal designation. I have, in my tenure here, have tried to explain to people, public, others, newly-elected officials, how the system works, and the more people see how the system works, and they've been around the longest, realize it needs to be fixed. My message, my theme today is, is that not only do I say that the state transportation decision-making process needs to be fixed, but I think there's another governance structures, even in this region, even here in the Clackamas County, I think that need some adjustments. And as we, as a spotlight moves around, and I'll talk about it next time, spotlight moves around to the city of Portland, or Mollum County, or Washington County, or other counties, or cities on how they function, I think that we, I think there are refinements that can be made to make sure that we're doing a better job on behalf of the citizens we serve. That's my message for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas.
Can I ask you a question, Commissioner Savas?
Absolutely.
So, I just, I wanted to piggyback on that really quick, because I was new to the county commission, and you made great efforts to help me understand the tangled web known as transportation policy and funding, and DTD, and Dan Johnson, couple hours on giant whiteboards breaking down how this all happens. I don't know how any hard-working resident at Clackamas County or in Oregon that is, you know, trying to put food on the table and pay their bills could, unless they're going through a master's class, have any understanding about how all of that works. And sometimes, that's why I think we get sometimes a little traction. People could be really upset. A lot of people, or we know they're upset about tolling, but it is so complicated, even for people that are really engaged in their local politics. They like, might have like a fingernail worth of information, and then when you really dig in deep, it's really, it really is complicated. And then, you have dog and pony show, public meetings to appease, you know, a few people that are trying to speak to this, but there's no real decision, there's no real questions being answered, and things are being stonewalled. The clock is ticking for the inevitable of a policy that no resident wants. That's been my experience this year, as I've learned about tolling, and I always learn, every time we have C4 tonight, every time I go to C4, I'm learning something new or reinforcing, oh yeah, that's right, that's a detail I always forget because it's so complicated. So, I had a question for you. I think I was just, it was in the paper, I had it text to me, the link, a day or two ago, I think it was from the Wilsonville spokesman, regarding, we did a Charbonneau Town Hall that was very well-attended, and I thought people found very informative because it wasn't a dog and pony show. Commissioners Savas and I, we got a little bit more into the weeds. It wasn't death by PowerPoint, but there were important messages and slides. We often used ODOT's own information to, and help explain beyond what ODOT has been willing to explain. I thought it was really good feedback, but there was another well-attended Charbonneau Town Hall that I think I didn't get to go because I was with my son doing some dad stuff, but I think that's, it's hit the news a little bit, it's buzzing on that end of the county. I don't know if you could give us, I'll yield my time to you if you'd be willing to give us an update on how that's gone in Charbonneau.
Yeah, yeah. So, that was not a Charbonneau Town Hall, that was actually a Wilsonville City Hall venue, was not sponsored by the city of Wilsonville, but it was the Legislative Subcommittee that is doing this four-series.
Separate from what we did on our own.
Separate from what we did on our own. Four-series, and it's a Subcommittee of the Joint Transportation Committee. And so, they were in Wilsonville, well-attended. The last one of this, of the four, is Saturday at Gladstone at 1:00 P.M., okay? So, there'll be invited speakers who'll get four minutes, or a few of them, I'm one of them, this is the only one I've been invited to, and everyone else will get two minutes. So, there'll be city councilors and other people, and yourselves, if you choose to, to be there, you'll have a two-minute opportunity to convey your message. But the, as opposed to the other two in Portland, the first one in Portland on that one Saturday here about a month ago, it was very area-specific. It was not so much about tolling, so much it was about the Rose Quarter Project, and but there were some invited speakers who made some points about there should be revenue sharing, and by the way, divergence is a big issue, and it's dangerous. Then the next one, that late in the afternoon, was in southeast Portland. We had some Clackamas County people there, elected officials spoke, a couple of them, and a lot more about diversion, a lot more about safety, and a lot more about some revenue sharing. Wilsonville, Clackamas County specific, dominated by the diversion, safety issues, bad idea, economic impacts and so forth, and I'm assuming that that will be as much or more on Saturday.
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you. That's my time, I give a little more to Commissioner Savas. I'll just say, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to blubiate too much, but I'm really excited about the new year. Already, just now, I'm reviewing my calendar, I'm starting to...
Do you want to wait till your opportunity?
Is it my, did you?
No.
No? Oh, you know what, I'll just wait for my turn, how about that?
That's okay, that's okay. I just want to give you time to formulate your thoughts. It's up to you.
Yeah, no, whenever I'm called upon, I don't know, I can't remember if I was or wasn't, it's a little, yeah.
Commissioner Schreider.
Okay. Are you able to bend? No, only kidding. Okay.
What a moving point.
Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to be back. After, had a great, great break with my family, I had the opportunity to be with my grandchildren across the pond, and thank you for carrying the burden yesterday. I was on a 10-hour flight from, that included buses, multiple buses, as well as a 10-hour flight to get back here in time, so I am glad to be back, and I'm very energized for 2024, and knock on wood, we will not have some of the situations we've had in the past, I hope. Wildfires, ice storms, heat domes, and again, civic unrest, and I wanted to actually thank my fellow commissioners, all of my commissioners, for being so good to me this year and appreciating the work that we're all trying to do together, and Commissioner Scholl in particular, I want to thank you. I think that you had a very rough start, and I remember talking to you about it, and I had a rough start, too, and I was also censured, just to let you know. And what has to happen when that happens is you, I remember saying to you, go around the county, and you've done this wonderfully, and get to know everybody, get to know who's where and how, and I have found you to be a very diligent, hard-working colleague, and as I've said, I've always, I have a deep respect for your military career and what you have done. And like I said, we all, we all have rough times, and I think that, I think you've done a great job as Vice Chair, too, so I just wanted to say that. Commissioner West, I always appreciate your enthusiasm, matches mine, I think, only I think that you have a little more energy than I do, so I'm glad to be working with you on things like recovery centers. Tudy, I hope you don't mind if I say this, but man, if you need a, if you need a cup of whoop-ass, you just go to Tudy, because she makes it happen. I love that. It's my fight. I'm just telling you, this is, I'm looking forward to the new year, because, yeah, you just are, you're just one lady that does not let anything get in their way. And Paul, I've always, again, appreciated your ability to move down into the details of things and, you know, keep me up to speed on all the technicalities, because I always tell people, if I ever need a detail, I go to Paul and ask him. And Gary, thank you. We haven't made your job easy, but you're doing a great job, and I'm so proud that you are our Administrator for the Year, and Mr. Madcor, evidently, you're on the path to reassignment, you lucky guy, so we're going to miss you, though, and you have put together a fantastic team of people. So, that's my new year wish for all of us, is that we move together in what I call building community across the county, and my favorite little line is not left, not right, but forward. All of us have the same interest in building our communities and helping our communities be the best we could, they can be, and sometimes, we differ on process, but I have no doubt that every single one of us has that at the core of who we are and, quite frankly, what we want to do for Clackamas County. From my perspective, I'm going to continue to work on workforce issues, I'm really looking, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you on a recovery center. I think that's going to be huge. I think we coined the phrase the Clackamas Way, which I think is fantastic. And one of the things I wanted to mention to you is that I've been looking into, again, to what Commissioner Scholl said, there is what they call in this state is a civics learning project, and the theme of that is the best way to preserve democracy is to teach democracy. And this organization was founded back in 1973 because a group of folks, particularly the law folks, judges, you know, people from our public sector, public, you know, folks were thinking that civics education was faltering in our school system. So, they started this project, and it really teaches kids about the structure of government in Oregon, and not only our state government, but our federal government and our local government. And some of the projects that they have been doing is, they do a We the People competition program, and students test their knowledge on constitutional issues, they do a Law Day Conference, they do a courthouse experience tours where the kids visit courthouses and learn how our public justice system works, and they do community action projects where students identify a public policy issue, and then they develop an action plan, you know, to address it and how that works. And they also learn what they call, I find this interesting, street law, and law students from Lewis and Clark Law School teach street law in high school classrooms. Lessons cover a wide range of civil and criminal issues and emphasize the real ways in which the law applies to students' everyday lives, and I think that's what we're missing now. And I think that's something that I've talked to Gary about, is maybe seeing how we, as a county, can maybe engage in some of this and teaching youngsters what the county does, why it's important, and what we do to serve people across the entire county, so I think that's going to be one of... So I think that's going to be one of my initiatives. I hope this go around, and I hope colleagues, I have your blessing for it. And it isn't, it is not based on ideology, I will tell you that much. I get criticized sometimes by not being an ideologue, one way or the other, actually from both sides of the aisle, so I must be doing something right if everybody's kind of annoyed with me, I always figure. But I think we're going to move forward and have a great year, and I'm so glad that I get to work with such smart people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Now, Commissioner West.
Okay.
How about it?
Yeah, Happy New Year, everyone, Happy New Year, Clackamas County, first business meeting of the year. I have found myself this last week being a little reflective. I think it's always what New Year's is about, you know, it's the resolution, moving forward in the hope of that, and the things we want to do to be better, not just for ourselves or family and our community, but also our communities. But I think it's important that we are reflective and look back about what, for me, what was this first year like? What, what, what happened? And what was Commissioner West's experience with his colleagues? And I respect every one of you very much and deeply. And I feel very blessed in, as elected, to be able to work with the four of you. Often, as electeds, we are at loggerheads, and we are, there's a lot of fighting and bickering and gamesmanship and all, it's the Game of Thrones of Oregon, right? So there's a lot of that that happens in politics. But if I reflect back, I have a lot of fondness of this first year and in Clackamas County, and I'm super proud of our county. And I guess I'll share why. If, if we deal with a lot, most people don't know all the things their county does. And some counties handle different things in different ways, and they have different things within their statutes and structures and all those details, but we do a lot in Clackamas County. But there's four big areas that, if I look back, that we really worked hard to tackle, and we were, had some headwinds as we moved forward in these issues. And I'm proud of how we tackled them. I think we now also have a lot of respect in these areas, not just within the community, but among other electeds throughout the state and region. We, we took addiction, homelessness, and housing head-on in Clackamas County in such a way that it is objectively true, that it inspired other counties to follow our lead across the state. We got positive local and national attention, and we have real strong objectives and provable outcomes about how we would lead in this space as we continue to move forward, in a way that we are excited about, and in a way that brings hope back in a community in a chronic crisis that many have not been able to quite tackle or get ahead of. We came in, when I came in, I was here for a couple weeks, and the county was about to buy a hotel. I had been here, I don't know, two, three weeks. The previous board wanted to buy a hotel. We ended up saying no, and it was quite dramatic and controversial, and the media was in the crowd, and people on both sides had many opinions on this issue, and they shared those opinions with us, and we listened. We didn't say no to dealing with addiction, homelessness, and housing in Clackamas County. We said, no, we're going to do it the Clackamas Way. We paused. We told the public what that framework and vision and worldview would be. We stood on principle against bad policies like Measure 110, clearly. Then we brought in voices and thought leaders and change agents from outside Oregon's echo chamber to help inform us with our Clackamas Addiction Recovery Summit. All along the way, we were getting influx of SHS dollars, when other counties can't spend it effectively. Because we set a worldview, a framework, and showed real leadership there, we have effectively spent some of that money. We have enough moving forward to be visionary in our policy initiatives, which we've been quite public about, and has inspired others. And the hotel, you know, who knows, sometimes as electeds, we don't always get our vote right. Sometimes, like me, I was quite conflicted on that. I'd been here a couple weeks, I was taking on someone else's plan and had to jump right into the fire. Maybe I got that one vote wrong. Time will tell, and I'm okay to admit it if I get some things wrong, but I think the county responded, and we have been quite visionary in our response, and our outcomes and numbers prove that. I'm very proud of the work we did in the year. It started off a little scary for me in the beginning, and quite tenuous with that hotel vote with Turnkey, but now I say, yeah, that hotel didn't happen, but look at this. And it's so much more expansive and responsive to the care and containment needs in Clackamas County, the metro area, than one hotel. And I'm really proud that we responded the way we did, and that I was able to be a part of that. Tolling and transportation, I won't get into much of that, but Clackamas County was a major and continues to be a major leader in that. Commissioner Savis just opined very eloquently on like, what that has been like with transportation and local leadership, and his years of experience. That pause happened Clackamas County, because of Clackamas County. The cock, I believe, the electeds galvanized on a local level and many of the state legislators because of Clackamas County's work and leadership. Our pushback on the EA, the documentation, the work that we did, Stephen Madcor, the work that your team did. Clackamas County has been a firewall against the tolling scheme that we are all threatened by. That's a fact. Like, there's no other county that's leading against tolling and what it does to local businesses and communities than Clackamas County. And, you know, along the way, as we fight these battles, we're not perfect, and we might have some pitfalls, and it might always be pretty, but, but Clackamas County did that last year in a significant way and continues to. Public safety, we are the safest county in the state of Oregon with more than 75,000 residents, and we share a 10-mile border with Portland. And we are part of the greater Portland area, which, people, wait, wait a second, how are you guys that safe and you're still part of the Portland area? Because we have a different worldview, we look at law enforcement differently, we have a different set of values, that really, I believe, champions and promotes public safety and safe living communities. And the rank-and-file in Clackamas County, the Sheriff's Department, they have a great relationship with this board, and we work together hand-in-hand to make sure that they have the resources they need to be one of the best sheriff's departments, I believe, probably in the region, not just in the state of Oregon. And I'm really proud of the contract that we did, I'm really proud of the accountability, but also the resources given and guaranteed to the Sheriff's Department, how we handled that, while also being a transparent, good government. We did that in Clackamas County over the last year. And workforce and business development, we have a motto where we're open for business in Clackamas County. And Commissioner Schrader's work around workforce, business development, and we still have some real challenges, like with ambulance services, and making sure that we have workforce for those needs, and trying to be creative, and working with the legislature, working with NACO and AOC and other entities that are facing same challenges, and trying to be creative in our solution, and we will continue to work on that. But there's a reason why wealth is coming to Clackamas County, leaving other counties, over a billion dollars left in neighboring county, and a lot of it came here. There's a reason why, what did you say, Chair Smith, with our property taxes are increasing, we actually have unexpected revenues because people want to live here and not in other parts of the state. Why? It's because good policy and good local government impacts people's lives the most. And it's, sometimes it's good to go back and reflect over this last year, what we did in 2023, and how this can carry into 2024. I'm proud to serve with all of you, and I just wanted to take a minute, at least on those big four policy initiatives. Chair, Chair, I think, I mean, Commissioner Schrader, thank you so much for your, your work in, on the workforce and business development stuff, and the work with, and the work that we'll continue to do. I just want to take a minute to reflect on all this. Like, this is, we just finished, this is my first year, and those are the, those are the four things that took up most of my time. Commissioner, I didn't even talk about natural resources and forestry and all the work you do with that, but Clackamas County, we're doing great things to the staff, Stephen Madcor, Gary, and any director that's still, we're the only ones in this room, and a couple, we have a couple citizens and residents watching, but, but if you're watching, I just wanted to say, really, thank you for helping us have a successful 2023, and I'm really excited about 2024, because we're, we're doing good things, and I think that we've laid good groundwork moving forward. So thank you for that, and that's what I have, Chair.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate the reflection from Commissioners West and Schrader. I'm not going to repeat that. We had a video at the last meeting of last year, and it's on our website, of the accomplishments, many groundbreakings, that we're able to rebuild our aging infrastructure in Clackamas County with investments that had not been made in 50 to 70 years in some places. And I'm very happy about that going forward. I have a couple of updates. We have scheduled for January 17th a policy session for the AMR response time issue. That's very important. It's on your calendar, check your green sheets. There's some other schedules coming up on that as well. I want to update the board, we'll have a briefing as soon as I know more information. Your PAs may be talking to you. Metro is pushing for a new vote on the supported housing services measure. Yet, they have dropped a poll, and I have asked many, many times for the polling data. They want to filter it to us through their lens, and so we will see how that comes forward. It's, it's going to be a challenge, I have to tell you, Commissioners, but you'll know more when I know more, it's very frustrating. Talking about the tolling issue and the support of IP-4, I learned this week that there's an online advocate who has quite a following, hundreds of thousands of people, and this particular entity pushed out support, go here and get a petition to download. They had over 250,000 responses and ended up breaking the site, because people wanted to sign the petition so they could vote before tolls. I think that is very, very telling. And Commissioner Savis has said, you know, many people, it's so complicated, nobody understands it, they understand. Oh, they understand, they understand they're paying an exorbitant amount of gas taxes, registration fees, DM fees, DMB fees, all kinds of fees, and yet they see no improvements, and they want to do this to us in a very inequitable way. And I do think that the new Oregon Legislature has inherited the vote on this, and therefore it is up to them to do something about it, just like this board comes on here, we're elected new, we've inherited some things. But I want to say, I'm not defending the vote on tolls. But you make a vote based on a point in time, and that's one thing I learned in my legislative days. You are, you vote on the information that's given you. Commissioner Savis made that point. Well, you can't go back and redo your vote that you did years ago, but you can take a new view at it, look at it, move forward and make corrections. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us, because things change, people's attitudes change. I mean, when I became chair, I was elected, I became chair in January of 2021, I never, ever thought we'd be dealing with homeless and drug addiction like we have been dealing with. I assumed, because I had served before, that these issues would be coming, and then we've just been engulfed by all of these issues. So it's incumbent upon the elected leaders to be flexible, and therefore I shifted to take care of what we needed to take care of, beyond what my impression of what this job was going to be. But we're working hard on this, I appreciate my Commissioners, I look forward to the new year. I got a lot of rest, I needed it, I was able to just dial it back, not do too much politics, I did some. But now that we're back in office, the emails are coming, and there's this coming, and we're back in the saddle, Commissioners, I appreciate you all. Welcome our new vice chair, and thank you, Commissioner Scholl, for being vice chair last year. See, no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.